All right. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members and student representatives, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yeah.
And tonight, we are supposed to have Kyle Monahan. I do not see him yet. So hopefully, he will join us. Oh, there he is. Hello. Okay, he's muted. Can you unmute him? Please. Just so he can say here. Is it not working? All right.
I am here.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yep.
And then Lydia Clancy here. Kyle, oh, nevermind. She muted you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade. Jeff Ferranti.
Yes.
Jennifer Gaudette.
She will not be joining.
Not tonight. Ryan Haas.
Here.
Wayne White.
Here.
Is there anyone else I'm missing? Oh, Brian Bowloo. Ulo.
Oh.
Bowl you. Bowl you. Colleen wrote it out phonetically for me, so I didn't say it right. Bowl you. Is he here yet?
I don't see him yet.
Okay. Chris Farrow.
He needs to be unmuted.
Yeah.
Yeah, she is.
There we go. Now I can unmute. Here.
Thank you. And Heather Shastany. I do not see her name.
Kathy H. Shash. Shash. Here.
Great. Awesome. Okay. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely per Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order issued in response to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the open meeting law requirement to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order permits public bodies to meet entirely. Wait. Oh, permits public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded the public so they can follow along with the meeting's deliberations. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a citizen's comment period. This committee is convening via Zoom video conference as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees may some attendees, sorry, are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Please raise your hand in the participants box. Now, if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. I am looking. I do not see any hands. So I will assume that nobody is broadcasting or recording. Meeting ground rules. Oh, sorry, nope. Meeting materials. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website under School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide a single comment, question, or motion. I will go through the line of members again for additional comments or questions as time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the Chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments for, yep, all right, there we go. Comments for SCmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. And that's comments numeral four, SCmeeting, all one word, no spaces, at maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizen's comment agenda item is addressed. Your email must include your first and last names and street address in order for it to be read. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. A change as of tonight, because it's been brought to our attention, that people are uncomfortable having their street addresses read for their comments. So I will only be reading the street name and not the number from now on until we get clarification on that. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everybody, everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizen's comments agenda item is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. And with that, I am going to open the meeting with a roll call of members. Mary Branley.
Here.
Jessica Clark.
Here.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy here. All right. So first order of business is to approve the minutes from the 1/21/21 meeting without objection. I would like to approve the meeting minutes unless there are any edits. Nope. Okay. So approved. Second, acceptance of the warrants. Without objection, I would like to accept warrants 21-040-041-042-043-044-045 and -046.
I just wanted to make a comment, nothing earth-shattering, but about 045.
Yep.
Because I know that warrant 047 was recently going around for this week. And just to point out that there is, for the board's clarification, there are two, there's $5,000 payment for the DESI, the audit, the annual audit. It's on both warrants, but it's, from my understanding, it is for different years. So that was something that I had questioned a little bit because I remember we had just recently on 045 approved one. 045 didn't indicate it was for, I think it was a different year. So I just wanted to just mention that to the board. So you, it is not, it is not a duplicate. It was for two different actual services.
Did you get an explanation for how that happened?
I just know that Eliza and Wayne, Wayne, I think he was gonna they emailed back and said, confirmed that it wasn't a duplicate. It was actually one for FY19 and one for FY20. So the one on 45 didn't say end of year 19, like the one we just had this week. So it wasn't really clear, but I just want to make sure. I, it wasn't anything that was duplicate. I just happen to remember it from a larger amount.
Okay. Thank you, Natasha. Any objections? Nope. Okay. They're warrants accepted. Now, urgent business. Ryan, do we have any?
No, we have no urgent business tonight.
Great. So then, I would like to hear from Kyle. Kyle, welcome. Colleen, can you unmute him? Good to have you here. Good to see you. We're very excited to have students reporting to us.
Hello. Thank you. Should I start?
You should.
Wonderful. All right. So first off, the new schedule began today. That includes e-block for the in-person learning, as you guys may know. So that went really well. I was in person today and I thought that it went very smoothly. And I am excited to go in for another period of day. The basketball teams just finished up. It was successful seasons for both the boys and the girls. The boys team actually winning the league title against better competition than usual. So that was exciting. The Student Council is hosting a 110 Grill fundraiser on March 30, Tuesday, March 30. Student Council is also planning March Madness, which will include community service, the food pantry drive, and a basketball shootout, a virtual bake-off of the class's cakes, outdoor socially distant relay races, and a scavenger hunt, as well as each class being able to decorate a section of the alumni fence. We are working out details in next week, but the events will be recorded and then shown the last period of the day on March 26. Girls State and Boys State will be held this year on the campus of Stonehill College from June 12 to June 18, 2021. For this year only, they are inviting participants in their junior year, as well as a very limited amount of seniors due to the absence of the event in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So far, five students have expressed interest in attending. Ms. Karen's AP Biology class is sponsoring March Mammal Madness, a national tournament organized by a group of biologists all over the US. Students, teachers, and school personnel can fill out a bracket, find information about the animals on their class Twitter account @m3mh21, or our class Instagram account @mh21m3. The winner will get a basket with lots of goodies in it. The first wild card game is Monday, March 8 between the Southern Redback Bowl and Hopi Chipmunk. Ms. LaBelle and Senior Michaela Carey are collaborating on a book that will be open to all students and staff at MHS to write reflections about the pandemic. This launch coincides with the one-year mark that we went out of school on last year. The book will be self-published and kept in the library as a reference work. More to come on that. They're looking to launch it next week because that will be a year since we first left school. And that is what we have so far for all of the stuff I needed to report on.
Great. Do you have any personal stuff that you want to share in terms of your experience this year and how things have been going? And?
Yeah, sure. I think it's obviously been really tough for all the students, but I think Maynard High School is handling it really well. Obviously, they're doing the best they can to try and get us back in-person learning and to make sure that it's safe. And I totally understand that there's baby steps in that. You can't just like go in right away. I think that like they're testing what works. And I think that we've also handled the COVID-19 virus very well. There's been limited cases in Maynard High School. And so I think what we've been doing has been really working.
That's great. Is there anything the school committee can do to, to help? I don't know, this year's seniors or, you know, this year's juniors in transitioning? Just because it's been so difficult for the past two years for you guys.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anything you guys can really do. I think that if one thing that I might add is just like asking how, how the kids are doing and how they feel. Like if there's like questionnaires or any, any type of questions that you guys can like, if we can fill out on a survey and just to see how everyone's doing, because I know that not everyone feels like their voice is heard. And I want to make sure that all the students have the ability to be able to get their voice heard.
Yeah. So check-ins.
Yeah, like check-ins. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. You're welcome to stick around if you would like to. You certainly do not have to.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have citizens' comments. So let me check if we have any new ones.
Hey Lydia, while you're doing that, I just want to apologize. My, my video is a bit wonky right now. I keep freezing. And so if I look like weird frozen, just, you know, I'll pop back. I might have to turn my video off if it keeps acting up, just as a heads up.
Okay. So I think we only have two comments for tonight. And the first is from Chelsea Brennan at Reeves Road. "I would like to express my desire to bring children back into the building five days a week, even if the DESI vote tomorrow doesn't require it. There are numerous studies showing there is virtually no difference between three feet and six feet spacing when other safety protocols are implemented. Almost no transmission in schools throughout the state. Teachers are now eligible for the vaccine, and we are fortunate to have low community numbers overall. We cannot stand by and allow the towns around us to send their kids back while we do not. It is in the best interest of the students to return to in-person learning from an educational perspective, but also, and maybe more importantly at this point, from a social and emotional perspective. The benefits of in-person instruction outweigh the risks, and we need to make a full return to school a priority for our school community." And the next is from Lisa McPhee on Durant Ave. "I'm happy to see some attention focused on the food program in Maynard Public Schools at this meeting tonight. I'm writing to express my concerns about the quality of the food, and I would like to urge the school committee and the administrative to take," I think she means administration, "to take a closer look and find ways to improve the program. I have spoken to a handful of staff at Green Meadow and dozens of parents who share my concerns, many of whom have stopped participating in the school lunch program this year due to feeling that the quality of it is poor. My own concerns started just over a year ago, prior to COVID, when I learned that my son was often having donuts and sugary foods for breakfast. In addition, I had learned that there were numerous unhealthy snacks at lunchtime. The breakfast continues to consist of highly processed packaged foods. I understand that the food chosen falls within FDA guidelines. However, I think Maynard can and should follow a higher standard, like many of our surrounding communities. While many of the families can easily opt out, some families are getting their main source of nutrition through this program. And for them, I think we can do better. I brought this issue to the school committee just over a year ago and since then have joined the Wellness Committee with the intention of improving this program to our schools, for our schools. I would like the school to be transparent with parents on what food, especially breakfast and snacks, are being offered to our children, especially after we returned in-person lunch. We should be permitted a complete list of offerings with ingredients and nutritional values. In addition, I would like to see a lot of the packaged breakfast food items replaced with healthier options. I know that there is a lot of support from parents for these types of improvements and am committed to this issue. Thank you for your time and consideration." All right. So now, we have superintendent's report. Brian.
Great. Hi, everybody. Great to be here tonight. Good to see a few of you and a lot of names on the screen. Let me start by just complimenting Kyle. Unfortunately, he left. I was hoping he was going to stick around for maybe three minutes because I just wanted to say, what a wonderful student. Super well-spoken tonight. Just did a fabulous job. And that's not his phone, by the way, because he's not here. So I just wanted to start with that. Also, let me just acknowledge one of our staff members who tends to be at almost every one of our school committee meetings. And I also meet with Carol Corcoran, one of our longtime paraprofessionals. I told her I'd give her a shout out because she is involved and here and paying attention and asking good questions of me during our meeting. So she's here and she's on the screen somewhere because I did check to see her name. So.
And she was a longtime school council member at Green Meadow too. So she's very active and.
Exactly. So we wanted to give her a shout out. So, thanks. So let's talk extended learning time. We extended, and Kyle mentioned this, so I'm not going to repeat all of it, but we did add time to each of the schools beginning today. And I'm glad to hear that. It went well at the high school. I haven't heard otherwise any of the other schools. So we were able to add a little bit of time to each of the buildings so students spend a little more time in school. And it's really academic time because we haven't yet added enough to add lunch and more passing time and more break time. It really is a, just an add of time, which we're excited about. It's a good move. And it's in line with where we're headed. So really, that's one of the big items on my report tonight, which we had a parent Zoom last night, which was actually great. It was a couple hundred people. And we really talked about the commissioner and what we think he's asking for and the meeting scheduled with the State Board of Education for Friday afternoon at 2:00. So we would expect that if they support his asks, his recommendations, that we get word sometime around 6:00 o'clock on Friday. That's kind of when those exciting things roll out. And that will be that he'll have the authority to really dictate what counts as time on learning. So in any given year, there's structured learning time and time on learning, and we need to hit a certain number of hours. And it's a little bit different. High School, Bruce Elementary School, 990 versus 900. This year, they, they shortened it a tiny bit because we started a little bit later. So the numbers are a little bit lower. But basically, if he gets approval, then he will be able to say that the only hours that count will be in-school hours for, at this point, it would be K5. So that's would really be his way of really pushing us to a full return for elementary school. We're interpreting elementary as K35. I think districts have a little bit of latitude in how they interpret that. And then exactly, we're waiting for the guidance. We're sort of excited and waiting to see exactly what it means when he says full day. Is that truly the full day? Is it five days a week? At this point, we're looking at five days a week, full days, because we think that's what he's asking for. And we're excited about that. We've been, we're planning for that. And then he's talked about transitioning middle school and then high school. It was nice that the governor was able to indicate that educators would be available for the vaccine on March 11. Personally, I feel like they're a week or two late. It would have been nice to have done that a couple weeks ago. So the timeframe would have been educators could have been vaccinated in February, March, for a full opening in April. That feels a little bit better, but I'm not the commissioner or the governor. I know, shocking to everyone on the screen. But we can work with this. There's really only a couple of week window of overlap as long as people are able to get the vaccine sort of early in this process. And, you know, we've internally, we've put out the emails and the information to staff to say, you know, log in, look at CVS, look at the sites. You can start to make the appointments. Now, they're, they're not easy to get. They fill up very, very quickly. But we know that. We spent a lot of time last night talking about, so what does this change mean for us? And so let's just be very transparent that right now, and I think Kyle actually mentioned it, our student rep, that we've been six feet apart, wearing masks, washing hands, and cleaning the building. And to his point, we have had minimal cases in schools. We've had no transmission. And the most recent, in the last few weeks, the most recent cases have really come from remote students, not even in school. But with this change that the commissioner is pushing and we're moving towards, we will not be at six feet. We will be in that three to six-foot range, leaning toward the three foot, for sure. We will still be wearing masks. We will still be hand washing. We will still be cleaning the buildings. So is it different? Yep. Absolutely. Is it a little, does it cause a little bit of nerves and a little bit of angst? It absolutely does. But there are schools that are less than six feet and have been, and they're seeing the same results that we're seeing. Meaning they're not seeing positive cases in schools. They're not seeing school transmissions. So this, we've learned a lot since August when we put all these original plans in place. And this feels like this is a slow, cautious approach to move back. And it's time. So we're excited about that. Kyle also mentioned basketball. And basketball is kind of one of those sports that we weren't sure about how that was going to go. It was, you know, it's inside. And it's a pretty, if you've coached or played it, it's a physical sport. I'm not that tall, so I coached but not played. At least for my kids. But very physical. And if you're doing it right, it's really physical. So I just want to share some information from the coaches. I was able to get some information from our athletic director, Brian, and the assistant principal, Kevin, and specifically from the boys and girls coaches. So I'm going to read a little bit about that because they really did have some amazing seasons this year in the midst of a pandemic. So if you'll bear with me, it won't take long, but it's really worth sort of celebrating what some of these small things, which, you know, we may not have ended up at Clark, and we didn't have a huge postseason. But so, this is from the boys' coach, if you will. "The fact that the boys were able to embark on a season and to successfully play in all 12 scheduled games was something the boys will always be grateful for. And to win the Pod Five, that's the group that we were in, the Pod Five title against six schools that are all significantly bigger schools with two and three times our enrollment figures is something that the boys will remember for a lifetime." So in past years, we're sort of grouped with schools that are our size, but with the reshuffling this year and just how we did it geographically, we were up against some significantly larger schools, and the boys performed incredibly well. "Coach Charles would like to personally thank the Maynard School Committee for making the season happen as the boys desperately needed the physical and emotional support sports provide. He'd also like to personally thank Jim Stewart, who served at the boys, as the boys JV coach, and Kyle House for serving as the boys' varsity volunteer coordinator. And finally, to the players, the 12 JV players who worked tirelessly at the middle school and the 10 varsity players who worked separately at the high school each and every day on their way to the Central Mass Pod Five League Championships." So super exciting for them. They just had a phenomenal season. So I wanted to give them a huge shout out. And likewise, we don't want to leave the girls out because they too had a phenomenal season and a great experience. It's a little bit different. And again, from, from the coach, Kristin House. She.
Uh-oh. Brian froze.
"Thanking the school committee for allowing sports to happen this year. It brought on many obstacles in the pandemic, but the girls did an amazing job handling all the challenges. Really, they only wanted to play. The girls completed their 2021 basketball season with a 6-6 record. They truly grew leaps and bounds from the start of the season to the finish. This year's team was led by two senior captains, Sophia Clark and Mia Premiano. They proved to be great leaders throughout the season. Sophia knew from the start of the season that she would not be able to play due to health issues, but that didn't stop her from coming to every practice and every game. And this was something that caught the attention of the other players on the team. She was an inspiration to all. Her leadership off the court was amazing as well this year. Mia Premiano set the practice tone. She worked hard in every practice and the team followed her lead. She's a five-year varsity player who has certainly grown into a great leader." The girls ended their season with a 6-6 record. Keeping in mind, Pod Five was made up of Division 1, 2, and 3, and only one other Division 14. So really, that record is incredible. It's an accomplishment. And really, they made it through their entire seasons COVID-free in a physical sport, running up and down the court. Anyway, she also, she too would like to thank her JV coach Denise Walsh, who did an amazing job with the younger girls. "The program has truly grown in the last six years, and what the girls learn on the court will only serve them well." The program has truly grown in the last six years and what the girls learn on the court will only serve them well later on in their lives. So just great shout out to the coaches, the students, a phenomenal season in the midst of a pandemic and all the limitations that were placed upon them. They truly succeeded.
I loved watching their games on YouTube, by the way. It was just really fantastic. And sometimes I would forget and you get the notification and pop up, you know, and you get to, so it was really, really exciting to see. So thank you for all the hard work there.
I was amazed at how they could wear the mask the entire time and run up and down the court. I was, yeah.
They did.
It's a new skill.
Pretty impressive.
Agreed. So another thing that we get to brag about would be Adam Steiner, Dr. Steiner, our technology director. So, and he was working with the town, with Greg Johnson, our town administrator for this, and we are now participating in the state's cybersecurity program. This is going to help us avoid being the target of malware and phishing scams that steal and or scramble our data and files. And believe it or not, I know we see that in the movies sometimes, but it has happened in Massachusetts recently and often to get those files back is not inexpensive. So the program consists of a cyber strength assessment, training activities and mock phishing emails. And really, Adam Steiner will be sort of taking us through that program over the next year or so. Wanted you to know that. I know that our athletic director, Brian W, is here. So he's going to talk about football. That's all I'm going to say is that I see him and I'm not stealing any thunder there. A couple more updates because you really want to hear from him, I know. Snow day protocols, you know, we've gone back and forth over what the options are for snow days and I'm hoping we actually don't need anymore. I'm feeling like, you know, it's warming up. It's getting good, but it's also Massachusetts. So I don't know. I'm not gambling on this one. We are able to either have a traditional snow day like we have the past couple of snow days or a remote snow day. And really, it'll just be storm dependent and weather dependent on where and what that storm is. But we have the option to do both right now, just so people know. I don't know if it's last. It might be last. It is. Mass School Building Authority, which you will start to hear a lot about the Mass School Building Authority. You will see the letters MSBA. And that'll start to become part of our vernacular for a while. If you were here 10 years ago, you'll remember it through the high school and it takes a lot of time and energy and you'll hear a lot about it. We passed through the first vote of feasibility study with the board, the MSBA board. Our next step is really working on a request for service. So upcoming meetings, you will hear about an RFS. An RFS, that's kind of the vernacular that we'll use. Request for Service for an OPM, which would be an owner's project manager. And all these acronyms relate to parts of this program. So our next step is writing a request for service for an owner's project manager. And that's really, really important and we need to take our time and we need to do that well. Because a good quality owner's project manager, they become sort of the lead, if you will, and they help the district and the town work with the Mass School Building Authority and then they really oversee the project at a high level. And so they are very important. So our goal is to have a draft owner's project managers, manager request for service to the MSBA by April 28th. So this is one of their deadlines. That's sort of the deadline we chose, which then puts us on their calendar for July 12th to be at their board meeting for them to give approval. So this is a pretty intensive process. There will be a lot of work over the next month or so to get the RFS completed, but we're excited. Everybody, we have a, actually, we have our first, it's not our first, but it's the next school building committee meeting to put, to go over this and put this in place so that we're moving the ball forward on that. We're very excited on. Green Meadow needs it and it's a long process. And each of these steps are, it's funny, they're equally important. They're basically all gatekeepers. You need to get through that step to get to the next level, to get to the next level. So we made it through feasibility. Now we need to make it through the RFS. And then we go for an OPM, then that leads to the designer. Eventually, we get into schematic design and an educational plan, but that's, those are gates farther down. So we're really excited with where we're at and where we're going. So thanks for having me tonight. I'm sure there's to talk about, but those are what I have for you right now.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Mary, do you have any questions or? All right, Jessica?
Nope, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to mention was that in relation to the elementary school coming back, K through five, if they're looking at doing that, that the, I was wondering about in the plans consideration, and you don't need to answer this tonight, but I just wanted to mention it about opening windows because from what I've, I've seen that ventilation is the key to having those three feet work out okay for the younger set. And it's great to hear it's, it's working in other places, but it could be based on in part, like the ventilation is different in every single building. So that, that's something just have in mind, they said, open windows and you're going to be in good shape. So.
I think that's a, that's a good point. My daughter's school, they've been back in full, full time and they keep the windows open every day, all day. And the girls just, they have blankets and they just, they're at their desks with blankets and it, they haven't had any cases in, in school. So they've done really, really well. Colleen, can you unmute Janet? I think she wants to make a comment.
Hi, hi. How is everybody?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. I just wanted to let everybody know that I went to the safety committee meeting today and ventilation was brought up there by Justin DiMarco and he is fully aware that all three schools have three different ventilation systems and he will be addressing what needs to be done for Brian moving forward, but that was totally addressed today at our safety meeting.
Thank you so much for that. That's very.
Right there, Janet. We're right there.
Brian, if you could make a note that when the classes are coming back, that the windows will be open, that your kids should dress accordingly.
Yeah, well, good point. We'll remind parents to remind kids and for the older kids, we'll just remind them. Absolutely.
Okay, Natasha.
Kyle, I wanted to also tell him and, but since you brought it up again, I just wanted to thank the high school. I know this has really been starting when we transitioned back to school, like the kids really did a great job following the safety protocols. And I know when we started school, we would hear these stories in other towns about these parties and congregating and, you know, what that happened and we never saw that and we never had that. And I really just want to highlight the hard work that those high school kids really, you know, put forth and making sure that that was not an issue that we had to address here in Maynard. And for the, the families that really helped support along those lines as well. So you know, we're, we're looking back, we can kind of breathe a little bit, but I just think it's, it is worth applauding that, that work they've continued to do. And getting back to the transition, Brian, about the grades as they come in, and I know this was something that I mentioned at one point, but I wasn't sure the timing of it. Are it, are we going to maybe consider amending April vacation week? Just thinking if kids are coming back full on site and then we're stopping a week and just thinking about that type of interruption. You know, once everyone kind of gets into a rhythm, maybe not taking a whole week off or what that conversation may be, maybe just continuing at least some routine a day or two or something during that week, since people probably won't be traveling and doing much and maybe to pick up from the snow, snow days that we've had to take as well.
Yes, we'll take that under advisement. We, in the conversations I've been part of with surrounding superintendents, there hasn't been a lot of, there hasn't been any conversation about that yet. But I'm on a meeting tomorrow, actually, with surrounding superintendents. I will bring that up and see, you know, what the appetite for that is. Both.
April 5th, right? April 5th is when, when, when we're planning to start bringing in the kids back, right? Is that the date? Okay.
Depending on what the commissioner says, that seems, that's the first Monday in April. That seems like a reasonable start date. It's a tough year, so April break is kind of touchy, just in terms of our people, even if they're not traveling far, whether or not people want to give that up or not is kind of, you know, and we'll certainly explore that. And, you know.
And I don't know the, you know, the right answer. I agree. I mean, it's been hard. I just thinking about the interruption when you transition kids back, you know, and getting them back into a routine and you're starting and then all of a sudden you're stopping that and the impact on parents that might have because then you got to go right back into five full days and transitioning back after being off a week. So I just want to, you know, have that be part of the discussion and even, I mean, again, not the whole week, but even if it's just two days to kind of keep some routine going.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. And you're all set?
Yes, thank you.
All righty. So now we have chairs report. And first thing I want to just review, even though this happened back in February 13th, I don't know that we've had a meeting since then. So we had the town budget review where the Board of Select Board, Finance Committee and the School Committee and administrators all get together and review the town budget for the next year. For us, we requested 21,435,000. The town has allotted 21,71,372. So that's the difference of almost four, $400,000. And so we then went to the select board meeting, school committee, or actually Brian, Natasha and Wayne and I went to the select board meeting this past Tuesday just to see if they had any questions and to help them understand our ask. And we had a really great conversation, I thought. And I think it was very productive. They have a better insight and understanding of what our challenges are and what our asks were about. But basically, we let it be known that, okay, so we can only provide a certain number of services if this is what our budget is. And so the, the community has to understand that that's what that is. That's how that works out and, and that and that if, if we aren't able to provide certain things, it's because of the budget and we really need to start getting a better sense, I think, in general, both the, the select board and the school committee of what it is the community wants and what the priorities are so that we can focus the funds in that direction. And, and and there will be fewer, I don't know, complaints for lack of a better word. And also it, it will make prioritizing the town's budget, I think, and, and where the monies go. I think it will make that much easier, especially now that we have a capital planning committee and, and they're going to start, they're part of the conversation now. So anyway, it was, it was a good conversation. It was recorded. You can go back and, and look at it. So now the select board meeting on the 16th, there were a couple of things that came up. Parks and fields, rules and regulations. Justin DiMarco would like to have all parks and fields across Maynard, regardless of ownership, have the same rules and regulations. So he will be here at the next meeting to present those to us. He will also be here and give us a solar array update. So for people who are interested in the status of the solar array, please join us. There, he also has discovered there's a discrepancy in ownership of Crow Park. So that's something that we talked, Brian and I spoke with Greg and Justine about on Monday. And it really isn't clear. And basically, we just need to have a conversation of who is going to oversee it and, you know, determine who's going to manage it and which body in, in Maynard, it makes the most sense to oversee that. Greg announced that the town employee benefits went, were 2.3% less than they had expected, but he's still not inclined to change the budget allocations in any way. So the budget allocations are staying where they are. He wanted to take the money that was saved and put it, I believe, in the reserve fund. Sesquicentennial Committee is eager to have student involvement. And I know that I've brought this up two or three times before. No one has reached out to them. So they're going to come to us next meeting and just discuss ideas for how students can get involved because they really, because of COVID, the celebrations really sort of fell flat and it's been a real disappointment because the committee worked so hard to come up with so many events. And they would really, one of the things they would really, really love is to have another time capsule or a couple of time capsules put together. So if there's any way we can facilitate that and Jen Piccarelli will be here next week to, to talk to us about that. And then lastly, we, we lost a person in our community this past week, Ashley Wilson. She, for those of you who don't know her, she was a graduate of Maynard Public Schools. She was also a former employee of Maynard Public Schools. She was well-loved and appreciated by a lot of people in town and she passed this past week. So a fund was set up to collect donations and I believe they are going to be kept for her son. And there are other ways that people can reach out, but if you are interested, donations should be made by December 10th. Yep, that is what I meant is March. I don't know where December came from. March 10th and let's see if I hold this trying, sorry. And you can donate, if you want to give cash, you can take it to Kathy Sullivan at Green Meadow. Otherwise, you can do Venmo at ann-rutherford-5 or PayPal to anns-rutherford@gmail.com. And Colleen, I don't know if you want to put that information in the chat just for people to reference. Okay. And that is all I have, except, you know, I would really like to express the school committee's condolences to Ashley's family and and all of, of the teachers who were really, really hit hard by this. So we're, we're thinking about you. I also would like, just off the cuff, I know I'm taking longer than I was supposed to. I also, the school committee would.
You're good, Lydia.
Huh? I'm good? Oh, good.
You're good.
The school committee would really, really like to extend their thanks and appreciation to all of the teachers who have hung in there, have worked really, really hard and are now working with us to transition into more, to longer days, to more days. And, and there will be more changes to come. And we just thank you so much for your patience and, and your help and your motivation and and we're very grateful. So thank you very much.
Here, here, as they say in official meetings.
So now we go to other business with Brian Boulou. Colleen, can you unmute him?
Nice job.
Thank you. And we're getting, we're getting a fall to sports update.
All right. Well, thank you, school committee superintendent and the Maynard residents who are here. I am very happy to be here again presenting about our uniquely created fall to season. This season was created as an extra season squeezed in between winter and spring so that teams that lost their seasons earlier in fall or winter would have a chance to have a chance to make it up. So for us, the only sport we actually had to cancel earlier, which is great, was just football. So all the rest of sports went off as they needed to. So for us, really, this season is our football season for this. So for us, really, this season is our football season for this, um, one that's created. And really, we wanna make a nice, you know, create a nice, safe season for the kids. Now, I do say safe because, of course, football is one sport where being socially distant isn't, really isn't an option. You know, they have to get close, they're gonna have to hit each other. So for us, we will need to be very vigilant and correct issues when we come across them. And I bring this up because I even know right on the first day, some pictures went out there showing kids not with their masks up, not doing what they needed to do. And, um, and like we do is that we just, we rectified that the next day. So I think that went out on Monday. On Tuesday morning, I was already having conversations with the coaches, you know, and, and getting them all to do it, because I know, I know they all wanna be safe, you know? And I know it's there, but it's a, it's easy to get that fatigue, mask fatigue from wearing it. So it's just a matter of really setting that standard. And I, right now, I believe the coaches have done a much better job since day one, and I believe will continue to be safe going forward. But like usual, I'll be watching out and everyone will be, and we'll make sure they're safe, you know? And it's a good thing, whereas, uh, you know, everyone's on the same page trying to get them to have this sport. Now, from there, I'll go into briefly what this sport will look like for the season. This is the Fall Two season, goes from February twenty-second to April twenty-fifth. And, um, we'll have, but they don't start having games till March nineteenth and later, because you need to have one month of them playing and actually getting into shape and doing a little bit of hitting so that they're ready for their first game and they don't get hurt. Our schedule is going against some teams that we've already seen over the last couple of months with geographic, but football is a little bit different. We don't really do direct geographical there because of the difference in sports. If you have a Division One school who's really good at football and you're going against a much smaller school, kids could get hurt. So they had to manipulate a little bit to make sure that that didn't happen. So for us, we'll be going against Littleton, Tinsborough, Hudson, Clinton and Groton Dunstable. And, uh, so more our size, but still, you know, geographically pretty close. We are continuing our co-op with AMSA, that we've been doing that for the last few years. And, um, I, it's something that should work really well for us, because AMSA isn't even in person yet as a school. And we've agreed to that if they do go into in-person school, those kids that are on our football team will stay home remote until the end of the season. So there'll be, never be a point where we're mixing their entire student body with ours. It will just be at the end of the season. They do have a bigger team for football, because you need it with everything that's happening. So the team can only have forty-five athletes. So we will have a varsity and a JV, and our overall roster is, I think, fifty-three right now. They will try to keep them separate, especially some of the younger kids from the middle school. They'll be practicing on their own, once they realize what, you know, where they're playing on the team and try to really keep them as separate as they can, so that we're trying to at least minimize it. It is a big sport and there are a lot of kids. And that's one of the things I talked to the coaches about, is that you have a lot of kids out there. And, you know, one kid can shut down that whole team. So it really, that's one of the reasons why, when I talk to them about the, you know, mask usage on the first day, I'm like, you know, this is really important, because there's a lot of kids there and it's very easily transmissible if that many kids. For us, yeah, field availability is the interesting thing for the season, because, um, our DPW has said that we cannot use our alumni field here. It's a grass field and, um, early spring, it just caused too much damage and it would cost a lot of money to fix it afterwards. And it's not just us, all, most of the schools around here are all in that same boat. So we are, we are trying to partner with other towns around us, so we can have some home games. And the town we're working with is Concord. And we're gonna be using, they have a turf field that they'll be clearing that we can use as our home games. That's still in flux on where we'll be and which ones are home games. We're still working that, those details out. But that right now is the plan. We were also doing one indoor practice at Four Kicks in Marlboro. It's a big gigantic, you know, indoor athletic place. AMSA uses it and they offer it to us for free for one night, so it's not costing us any money to get an indoor practice once a week. So I thought that was a great, great ability for them to actually get inside and not be cold. We're doing it in snow or whatever else after practicing. See, spectators will be slightly different than what we've done in the fall. In the fall, we only allowed two home spectators and no one could go to any away games. We've opened this up a little bit, because the state rules have changed a little bit, and we're going to be doing two for home and two away. So you can have two come to home, two go to away. We are gonna track it very carefully. I'll likely be the one personally at every single game, away or home, checking in who shows up and making sure that each athlete has two. There'll be a sign-up sheet ahead of time. And then when they show up, I can just kind of check them off as they come in, to make sure we know exactly who's there. Contact tracing and just to keep the crowds in a reasonable level. The, um, practice rules, they, these haven't changed much, so enough to go into them too much. I very much like how they work, a lot of the other sports. Over the last two times I've presented, you know, masks must be worn. You can take a mask break away from everyone else. Coaches have to wear masks the whole time, no access to locker rooms, bring their own water bottles. We are still limiting practices to one and a half hours. And, um, and attached with this meeting, you'll see that I actually attached, you know, how you can get in contact with MIAA and our old LEED guidelines. So if you wanna read through them more carefully you can, to see what other rules would need to be following. And, um, that, that's my presentation. You have any questions?
Uh, let's go through, um, Mary.
No, not really. Um, I did wanna make one correction, though, Brian. We did lose one winter sport, hockey. And I know it's the co-op. That was, that was unfortunate, but I know it was out of our control.
Yeah, you're right. I forgot about hockey, but yeah, you're correct. We did lose that one, but this-
My son's sport, so. It was always one of those, it was like a stepchild, you know? But, uh, but anyway, I'm hoping that that, it's still, you know, we still have that relationship next year with them.
Yep, I, I made sure I kept the relationships. Some parents wanted to try to move to other places, but in the end, it made more sense to make sure we kept the good relationship we have with them and the coach we have with them. And I grew up playing hockey too, so I, I definitely didn't wanna see that.
Um, and just a question, no cheerleaders, no cheerleading that the girls-
We, we don't have cheerleading, so we won't be doing cheerleading. There are other schools that are allowing cheerleading at their homes, at their home events, where they allow cheerleaders, cheerleading on the sidelines, so that will exist, but-
So we don't have the cheerleading program anymore, huh? Interesting. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Uh, Jessica.
Um, no, no questions. Thank you for taking the time to present and educate us all. Really appreciate it.
No problem.
Eflin.
Uh, I just, just comments. One would just be, thank you for, um, talking to everyone and just get everyone's head back into what we need to do for staying safe. It's just, I think we all get together and it's just get in this like, oh my gosh, here we are, we're doing something. It feels kind of normal. Um, so I appreciate that. And also just your consideration of how to ensure that we are sticking to the two people for each of these and just really the attention and mindfulness that you've been putting on everything. Just grateful for that response to this. Thank you.
Yeah, just to, if you wanna clarify a little bit, what it will be is, I'm probably gonna have a Google, document that they can fill out beforehand. Each parent can put two, like their names down for each one of them. That will be what I print out, so I'll have matched the names to the kids and, and so it should, hoping it works smoothly.
Yeah, Natasha.
Um, Brian, thank you very much. I, I, I feel like this year has been so successful, really, and that much of that is really just attributed to all of your hard work and trying to fit really tough pieces together, um, and, and, and all those, you know, everyone's needs. So thank you for that. Um, I did have a couple of questions for you. The, the field use for home games, you mentioned that you're, that's still being looked at. Concord has a turf field, um, that might be used. Is there, I'm guessing we would have to rent that in maintenance and busing fees associated? Do we have numbers on what that might look like or?
So, no, I don't have all the numbers yet, but our, um, so I'll get that as soon as I can. I don't believe it would be more than what we would pay to have to maintain our own fields. We have a large budget for our own field maintenance that we do not need to use, because that would be used for drawing the lines and all these other things that you need to do. We won't need to do that this year, so we should be able to transfer that over and be able to use it for that.
Okay, that would be, yeah, if we could, that would be great to hear, like, how that is working out, which would be helpful, um, as well. And, um, the, the spectators, I saw that, that you, I heard that you were going through that. And, um, will they, I'm guessing they are gonna be required to wear masks, um, as well? Is that how that's gonna work? Or, I mean, we're not gonna have home games here per se, but I'm, is that part of where, if they were gonna be conquered, is that what you would envision happening there?
Yep, they would have to wear masks. And, um, I'll be there attending it and I'll watch our own sideline. You know, one side's on one side, we're on the other. So I'll be there, and if I don't see mask usage, I'll, I'll let them know. And, um, they still need to maintain distance between each person and family units. So you can have two people obviously standing side by side from a family, then they'll have to stay away from everyone else around them.
Okay, and practices, uh, we, do we, we don't have folks who are trying to, I guess, it could happen, but watch the kids practice. I know, I don't know if that's ever been a concern, that we have families or folks hanging out at practices. Well, i- is that something that is just being, I guess, monitored? Or, I know right now we have a lot of snow, so I don't imagine there's gonna be a lot of, you know, places for that. But, um, I know it's kind of an open area. And, um, if there's just thought on, on that. I know some members of the public might wanna come watch, you know, or whatever. Seeing football happening on the field is kind of, might be exciting for some kids to, to get back to. So I just wanted to just put it out there, if we could maybe think about how, you know, how we would address that, if there are people who do tend to, you know, just stop by or congregate if they're what, practicing.
It's a good question. It hasn't been something that's come up in the past, but it will, um, but it is something to watch out for now. So, um, that's a good thing to look for. So I will speak to the coaches on that about watching for parents coming in and maybe they can send out a, um, email to all the parents of all the kids, making sure that parents don't come to practices, just to-
Well, that's what I was thinking, like the high school, like the parents, you know, dropped off, like for basketball, it was just drop off, you know, no congregating. And so kind of like along that same lines is just, you know, drop off, pick up, whatever, just to keep the areas just focused on, you know, who, how many people are around. And I just also wanted just to thank the, the families who also plowed that ginormous, I don't know, looked like ten feet of snow. Those, those dads, I, I believe it was like nine hours or a whole day that it took. And, um, you know, I don't know, I just was really glad they were able to do it. I was, I was not happy that they really had to do that, but I was, you know, just the dedication that they, they did just to get the sport going. I just wanted to give a shout out to all the hard work that people, you know, even families are contributing just to make this, um, successful, um, for that. And if, I don't know if that's something that, if it snows again, what are the plans for clearing out the practice field? How was, is that something that, I just hate relying on families to do that, to be honest with you. I, there feel like there should be a different way to approach that.
Yeah, as of now, that would be the plan, but it's something we can definitely look into and see if there's a way we can have the DPW help in a way to keep it safe. But they did claim that they can't, and I think that's why the parents stepped in and did it. And, um-
So DPW indicated that they couldn't help plow or?
They didn't have the machines or the ability to do it at the time. So that's when the parents stepped in and did it.
Okay. Um, interesting. All right, that's good to know. If, if there's a way we could, I mean, reimburse them for all their gas, for their snowplows or whatever, I don't know if that's something that, it just, it's a lot for them to do. And it's the fact that we're asking them to do that for so many hours for a school event. I don't know, I just am a little, what if they get hurt or something? It just worries me. It really does. I'll, I'll be honest.
Can we take this conversation offline afterwards?
No, I just wanted to share my feedback with Brian, so that's really what I wanted to do. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, thank you very much for being here and, um, and for your diligence and keeping everyone safe. And, um, I'm sure you'll be back as soon as you have news on spring sports.
Yep, I'll, yep, I'll put all the word out when that happens, so we can all know where we're at. Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
So now we need to vote on the school calendar, because it's been amended to, to allow the teachers, sorry, I can't remember if they're coming in later or earlier.
Coming in one day later, but then there's gonna, is the professional development.
Yeah.
The thirty-first instead of the thirty.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept and approve this calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, latest revision of the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two revised Maynard Public School calendar.
And do I have a second? I have a little second. All right, discussion.
Can I just clarify on this? I just wanna make sure I'm getting this right. Sorry. So what we have is that you have the professional days, no school from the thirty-first. First, second, there's no school on the third, sixth is Labor Day, and so the first day of school is the seventh, right?
So, so the main difference is that the kids won't be coming in before Labor Day, which-
Right. That's what I was wondering. I just wanted to make sure that I was getting that right. I needed to process that all the way through. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Can we just get some clarification from Brian, why?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, can we get a little context here? I feel like-
Sure, gladly. So usually there's two professional development days. Looking at moving into next year, we thought three professional development days was appropriate for a few reasons. So in, in a normal year, those professional development days are really reviewing new students, so the teachers all get new students. Depending on the students, they review IEPs, they review 504s. They get updates from school counselors. That usually, that could easily take half a day. They also work at, at the building level. They have team meetings, goal setting. And then really, teachers also want some time to get their rooms ready to be, you know, to have students there, so they're welcoming and the, the climate, they can set the climate of their classrooms. And what's different this year is, um, we've worked hard to get a new student information system. So we're transitioning out of Tyler into using a system called Aspen, which is a new student information system. And that too, it's, this is a really strong system. It, it got rave reviews. This is what the committee recommended, they really wanted. But like any system, it's as good as the information we put into it. So we want some extra time at the beginning to really make sure we have the opportunity to train everybody so that they, we can fully implement it with fidelity. So that's, those are sort of the big, three big things that we sort of anticipate needing some time for. And just, it's been a long year. I think teachers are gonna need some time just to regroup and have some time to talk to each other and be in the building and get their rooms ready and, and not be stressed to do it in a day or in a day and a half, but to have that extra time.
Jessica, did you have any questions or comments?
No. Going back after Labor Day, I will say, um, I have experience with Aspen, um, with one of my kids is a great, it's a, yeah, it's great. So easy to navigate from the parent side of things.
Good.
Um, and it, yeah, much better than what is currently.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. It's a step in the right direction for us.
Yeah, better. Yeah. Okay, so, um, roll call vote.
Wait, um, I, I had, I thought you were gonna go through, sorry.
Well, you had already asked a question, but yes, go.
I, no, I, I had not about the school calendar.
Well, we sort of both asked at the same time. Go ahead.
About what? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't ask any question about the school calendar yet. The, um, understanding the, the date, so the, the ending date, sorry, my video just cut out now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the last day of school with this is gonna potentially, it'll push back until June sixteenth and then pending snow day, right? So if that would be going into, you know, two snow day or two snow days, and that'll be June twentieth or later. Or actually, the nineteenth is a hol, the twentieth is a holiday. So that would be the twenty-first potentially, right?
Correct.
Is the, and I, I definitely think with the new rollout of the new system, I remember, I think the last time it was, happened around school starting, and it was, I think, a lot of transition. I think people did feel a little unprepared with that. So I'm glad that that's the intent with getting all that information out. Is there, can you explain a little bit more the reasoning why August thirtieth, we wouldn't wanna, I guess, push that back a little bit more?
So, I mean, I think the thinking would be, so to move it back by one day, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense for families or students, because that would allow them to come for one day. They'd come Thursday and then they would be off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Having a four-day Labor Day weekend is pretty typical in Massachusetts. Maybe not all over the country, but in Massachusetts, that's, um, kind of standard operating procedure. So it didn't make, I, I think when we looked at that, if it was really only getting students in for one day, we'd rather just let them relax and enjoy the end of summer and then come back and, you know, start, start strong.
Okay, yeah, no, it's, because I know Maynard actually doesn't normally do that, start after Labor Day, and many districts do, but it, it hasn't been something that we typically see. So I just wanted to kind of get a little bit more, um, information on that. And then, um, and then the other thing was relating to, and this is more like the school, the school committee. I know we had talked about like the policy- I know we had talked about like the policy a a little bit, and I had sent an email about like different formatting. I don't know if that is something that we would wanna consider. Other districts, how they do to highlight, just again, um, areas or area, like for the homework policy that we talked about. Like we mentioned about potentially citing the school calendar.
That's in progress. That's in progress.
Okay, so that might be like another revision.
Yeah, I, we, I mean, call, we just didn't have enough time to go through. And and it wouldn't be this calendar that got revised. We would do a separate calendar that would then be on the back.
Got it. Okay, all right.
Okay, so now can we vote? Roll call. Mary Ranely.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethany Holyhan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes, okay. It is approved now. We have a presentation from Fresh Picks, which is the um, food service provider for the schools. Colleen, if you could unmute um, Heather and I think, um, I think Chris, I saw him before. I think he's here. Already unmuted. Okay, excellent. Um, so, welcome. Thank you very much. Um, this, we're, you have a lot of parents who are very interested in in hearing about the food program because it's very important to them that their kids eat well. So um, go take it away.
Great, thanks. Um, so my name is Chris Farrell. I'm the Vice President of Business Development for Fresh Picks Cafe. Um, Heather, your Food Service Director is with us, and actually also John Peters, who's your District Manager is here with us.
Thank you, John. Sorry, I didn't realize that you were um, that.
Not a problem. Nice to meet everybody.
Right. Um, and so thank you for giving us some time to talk about the programs. One of my favorite topics. Um, we're gonna start off with a, just a brief presentation that Eliza from the Business Office did a fantastic job putting together for us. Um, and then we'll open it up to questions. And Colleen, I believe you have the presentation all set up to share on the screen. Great. Thanks. Okay, and whenever you're ready, we can just go to that first content slide. Great, thank you. So um, one of the most important things for your food service program is making it accessible. Um, especially during the pandemic when access to everything has been limited. Um, the more accessible the program is, the greater the participation, which leads to a stronger program and better nutrition for your students. And these are just some of uh, you know, the statistics about what's been going on. Um, Colleen, if we can go to the next slide, please. So the nutritional quality of the program is governed by your participation in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. Um, these two fun programs are funded by and regulated by the USDA and it administered by DESI. Um, USDA regulations cover every aspect of the program you can imagine. From what constitutes a meal to how much training is required for our employees, to the amount of time between breakfast and lunch service, literally everything you can think of that would have to do with your food service program is regulated by the USDA. Uh, and in exchange for that, you get um, reimbursement in the form of cash and donated foods, which we'll talk a little bit about um, as well. Colleen, can we go to the next slide, please? Thanks. So the USDA has specific requirements on what constitutes a meal um, that's eligible for reimbursement. Um, it's referred to as meal patterns. This is the lunch meal pattern up on the screen. We did, did actually also provide a more detailed document that's got the lunch meal pattern, the breakfast, um, a lot of the other nutritional aspects that are required really didn't work on this screen. Uh, but so for lunch, uh, there's five components that are necessary. Um, grains, a meat or meat alternate, fruit, vegetable, and milk. Um, and we have to provide these different, five different food groups on the menu as part of the reimbursable meal in specific quantities every day. Um, in addition to the meal patterns, there are regulations that we have to monitor and targets we have to hit for calories, saturated and total fat, sodium, whole grains. Uh, Colleen, can we go to the next slide, please? So offer versus serve is a part of the USDA program that kind of dictates how we provide those components and more specifically how students choose them. And it gives students some flexibility in those components that they choose. So you're, the menu at lunch offers five different components. Under offer versus serve, the students have to select at least three components. One of those components has to be a fruit or a vegetable. Um, and you know, I, we also gave out a more detailed handout on this, but I really wanna call attention to that chart down on the bottom right-hand side. Um, because if you look at the requirements for the different meal components, um, you can see that the fruit and vegetable components are pretty sizable when you get up to the high school level. Um, it's a cup of fruit and a cup of vegetables is what we plan for the kids to be able to take with each meal. Um, whereas, you know, when you look at the grains and the meat meat alternates, it's a two ounce equivalent for the grains. It's a two ounce equivalent for the meats. Um, those are not typically the American diet. Um, and you know, really USDA, when Congress passed the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act back in two thousand and eleven and mandated USDA to make all kinds of changes to the program. Um, one of the things they looked at was the Dietary Guidelines for Americans, which is what all federal programs are supposed to follow in terms of food. Um, and just looked at that data, and really, I got this from a conversation with uh, somebody from the Euro Field Office. Really what they saw was across the country, every category, when you looked at food, all kinds of stuff was going up, sodium requirements were going up year after year, uh, fat was going up year after year. Consumption of everything was going up year after year, except fruits and vegetables, which were flat. So when they redid these meal patterns, little less than ten years ago now, they really changed the structure so that it would, we'll say promote, but almost kind of force the consumption of fruits and vegetables. Um, so it's really, you know, the program is structured. Kids have to take a fruit or vegetable. If they take all of the fruits and vegetables that are part of that required um, meal pattern, it is a lot of food, but it's not typically what the kids are opting for. You know, they're not necessarily looking for a cup of fruits and vegetables and say a cheeseburger that's the size of a, you know, little ninety-nine cent McDonald's cheeseburger. They're looking for a big burger, that kind of stuff, which really with the sodium requirements, the cap on saturated fat and total fat and all these other things, it really, it doesn't fit into that meal. So offer versus serve is what we do to give them some flexibility um, to try and kind of, you know, let them choose some of this stuff. We do offer, when it's normal, non-pandemic service, we try and offer a lot of variety of fruits and vegetables to choose from. Um, so you know, to kind of keep with that theme and encourage them to take more fruits and vegetables. Um, Colleen, can we go to the next slide, please? So I mentioned that, you know, the USDA supports the program through cash reimbursements and then also donated foods. So um, your program gets donated foods from the USDA in a variety of different uh, ways. What's typically referred to as brown box or commodities foods are a lot of the center of the plate items, the meat meat alternates, the um, cheeses, a lot of that kind of stuff. We also get a lot of pasta and those type of uh, whole grains from them as well. Um, and it's really, you know, it's a great benefit to the school district where we're getting these cases for two, three, four dollars apiece, depending on the weight. Um, you know, so we'll get a forty pound case of beef for four dollars. Um, that's really good. One of the other components of it as well that we really rely on is actually through the DOD, not the USDA. It's called the DOD Fresh Program. Um, and basically it allows the school to participate in the Department of Defense's pure procurement and gets fruits and vegetables that Department of Defense procures for all of their programs. So under the DOD Fresh Program, the school is getting things like fresh cases of apples, fresh lettuce, all kinds of fresh fruits and vegetables for no cost, other than that entitlement that's provided by serving those reimbursements. Um, there's a third, oh, I'm sorry, you can stay there, that's fine, Colleen. There is a third component to um, the commodities program, which is processed foods, where you could opt to take some of those brown box commodities or that kind of thing and have it turned into products for you. For, you know, for example, instead of getting mozzarella cheese, you could send it to Tony's and have it turned into fro- um, frozen pizzas. We do not participate in that part of the program in Maynard. We prefer to get the whole products and the DOD fresh products and make the food with those rather than send it to a factory to be processed. Okay, so that brings us specifically to your meal program. Um, and this year we are operating under the USDA's meal waiver, which allows all students, I'm sorry, all children eighteen and under in the community to be able to receive a meal for free. Um, you receive reimbursement from the USDA, both in form of the cash reimbursement and those commodities we talked about. At the inception of this, Wayne and his team and the administration did a great job um, coordinating, having pickup sites around the city. Um, it was really beneficial to the program. When the pro, when the pandemic first started, we did start doing um, remote pickup meals at the schools. We only had pickups at, I believe at that time, just at Fowler. Um, and there was not a lot of participation in the spring. I think we maybe got up to, you know, a dozen kids a day picking up. Um, coming back into it this school year, the Business Office Team, the administration made this effort to get these spots around towns. They did a lot of outreach, which we'll see on the next slide. And I, we started off with when we go to the Q and A, Heather can answer, I believe, two, three hundred meals a day that we were serving under the remote meal program. Um, Colleen, can we go to the next, next slide? There was a lot of outreach done to make those, uh, get those numbers up, emails, um, letters to the food pantry, open table. The pickup sites were posted on Project Bread and the USDA's Meal Finder website and lots of other things to uh, get that promoted. Okay, if we can go to the next slide, Colleen. So this is um, some photos of some of the meals that we've been doing in the pickup program. Um, and this is the, one of the things that I'm most proud of. Um, you know, when we did this shift to remote meals, um, Fresh Picks in general and, you know, at Maynard as well, we really made a concerted effort to continue to try and prepare meals rather than really rely on packaged and pre-made products. Um, you know, both in the remote meals program and in the regular program. You know, we do use some convenience foods. Uh, we do have some packaged items, mostly because, you know, they're popular with the students. So we do wanna mix some of that in, but we always like to, as much as possible, make these meals from scratch. Um, you know, and in sen- since the inception of the remote learning over the past year, we've seen a lot more in terms of, you know, vendors trying to pitch us and other school districts using a lot more packaged items. Um, you know, a great one of, I, a good example uh, that uh, we, Heather, John and I were chatting about the other day because she got the advertisement for it. That same distributor that brings you the commodities foods is now offering um, a box of remote meals. And it's a box of seven days worth of remote meals that's intended that you can just receive it and hand it to families. And it is a box full of completely packaged foods that were made in a factory. Um, one of the craziest ones I just saw at a walk-through at a different school district yesterday is called Breakfast Breaks, which is all packaged foods that are then put into like a another package that's all sealed up. So essentially those food service workers are opening a box, taking the package out, giving it to kids to go home, to open it up, to take all the packages out. Um, Colleen, if you go to the next slide, these are just some more examples of the fresh meals that we have been doing in the program. And, you know, you can see a couple packaged items there. Like I said, there are some packaged items, but for the most part, we've really tried to duplicate what we do onsite uh, when it's not the pandemic out to the remote program and under pandemic conditions to the best of our ability. Um, and with that, I'd like to open it up to your questions.
Thank you very much. So, um, that was really informative. I I will go through. I do have a question, but I will, um, Mary, do you wanna start?
Sure. Um, I, first of all, I wanted to stop by saying how appreciative um, I am that um, we were able to do so much outreach to the the kids um, during the whole pandemic. I run the food pantry in Maynard. And um, so you know, we've been hearing a lot of good comments from um, from people who are also picking up um, those lunches. So thank you very much for that. And um, my question is more, um, because I'm also on the Wellness Committee and and Heather has has been a great um, resource for that too, being on it. Um, so my question is more um, related to when we get back to normal and like before COVID. That I heard that there, and I know this is difficult, but there were kids that if they were later in line and they wanted a specific protein or that, that they were all, um, you know, all sold out. So um, and I, again, I don't know how you regulate it, but it was sort of, you know, like even the kids that maybe are vegetarian that, you know, and everything was gone by the time that they.
Nope, Mary, we lost you.
Are you back?
Mary. Mary, we can't hear you.
I don't know if she can hear us.
Mary.
All right, sorry, how much did you hear?
Nothing.
We got up to the part where um, you were talking about even the vegetarians and worried about, you know, some of those options running out.
Right, right. And then the other piece was, um, and again, this was specific to Fowler when I was hearing it, that um, that the, the sweets and the not-so-great foods, the ice creams were at the beginning of the line. It was more the way that it was laid out, that the kids are obviously gonna take the more fun stuff instead of taking nutritious stuff. So, um, and and another, the third piece, which I guess we maybe just have to get the word out better, is that um, parents can can kind of restrict what the kids can buy. They can actually put it so that, um, so maybe we need to get the word out for those parents that are not happy that their kids aren't taking the more nutritious foods. So.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna start, I'm gonna answer those actually in reverse order and uh, pull Heather into it at some point. Uh, but yeah, so with um, that ability for parents to place restrictions on the account, um, that's probably something, we've done that outreach in the past, but I know, you know, it was at least, I mean, it's, the pandemic's been a year now, but I know it was, you know, well before that. Um, that is probably something that when we get back in into normal service, um, whenever that may be, we'll get that out and probably wanna start to make it more of a um, regular thing to get that on a regular basis. That information, we provide a welcome letter every year um, that can be distributed. We give it to the school offices. They can give it out with, you know, the students' packets when they come back to school, that kind of stuff. It, it's in there as well, but it's one paragraph in a two-page letter. So yeah, we can definitely get that word out um, about, um, you know, being able to make those restrictions. Uh, one of the other things too, by next school year, we're actually going to be rolling out a nutrition website. Um, when we're operating pre-pandemic, we had a menu website where parents could go on and view the menu and get nutritional information on each item, that kind of stuff. Um, after pandemic, for next school year, we're gonna be rolling out a website that that's kind of housed on, that's got detailed information about how to, you know, make your payments, how to restrict student accounts, different wellness resources, all of that kind of stuff. Um, so that'll, we'll be able to do it on there as well. Um, getting to the sweets at Fowler, um, I believe, last I knew of, and Heather can correct me on this, I believe they were right before the uh, registers, right, Heather?
Correct.
Yep, so those would be at the end of the line. Yep, so those would be at the end of the line. And, you know, that's where they're placed. Um, and then in terms of running out of some of the certain proteins, that kind of stuff. Um, that is an operational issue that typically doesn't happen on a regular basis, Heather, can you comment on that a little bit, or?
So, uh, we did run into a popularity. Piece with inventory early on at Fowler, our participation has gone through the roof, we have great staff. Throughout the district, but especially at Fowler. Um, so we've had to kind of tweak our numbers for production. And it was mostly a matter of their first choice wasn't there, but then they were happy with their second or so forth. Um, but we had seen that issue and then adjusted our numbers and have corrected that pre-pandemic.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that can happen, I mean, typically, what are you offering, about ten or so entrees a day at Fowler?
Oh, uh, at least.
Yeah, um, you know, so we have a lot of choices and sometimes that one choice can run out and. It does happen if it's more popular than we expect, whatever, and you know. We just do our best to tweak those numbers like Heather said and get that corrected for subsequent times.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Yes, um, two quick things, one, um, I noticed on the chart provided that there isn't any like cap or regulation mentioned on sugar. Is that not regulated? Is there a reason for that?
So, um, no, it is not regulated, and it's funny because when I. When the regulations, when that new meal pattern first came out, um, my position at that time was writing the menus and plugging them into the nutrition. Analysis software. And you're exactly right, there was no regulation on sugar. And like for me, if I was writing that menu and I was too high on fat. What I would do is I would have to add sugar. To maintain the calories but get the fat in line, yeah, no, it's, it's a problem with. The meal pattern, it's a problem with their regulations, um. It's something that was, I believe, imp- um, addressed more in the two thousand fifteen dietary guidelines. These are based on two thousand ten dietary guidelines, which didn't really get into sugar. Um, it's something they regulated with the um, non-meal components. So those snacks that we were talking about, you know, those fun items, those are all regulated for sugar. Uh, but the actual program itself is not.
So like the, the, just to clarify, like at Fowler, where you're mentioning the snacks available before the register. Are not regulated, but for like Green Meadow, when they offer cake on Wednesdays or whatnot, that is regulated?
Okay, so the snacks at um, Fowler. That we're talking about before the uh, register, they are regulated just under a cold different set of criteria than the. Chart you're looking at. And that criteria for those products does regulate sugar. So the meal program at Fowler, the high school and Green Meadow. Um, no, sugar's not one of the considerations in that meal pattern. Um, I don't know, and I know we're doing um. Muffins and that kind of stuff, I don't know how often we're doing cakes and that kind of thing.
Because my child only wants to buy lunch in the days that there was.
Yeah, I mean, we do it from time to time. It is, we do it from time to time, it is a whole grain uh, based product. Uh, but yeah, we, I mean, we do that, we do tray cookies from time to time, that kind of stuff, to help encourage participation. Um, because, you know, again, if, you know, putting like fresh apples and salads on the tray, we're get lots of kids in. We'd be more than happy to do it every single day. Um, but we do it most days and we throw in some treats here and there to encourage that particip- participation. And really too, one of the things I'm, uh, Heather and I are going to be getting um, in with the wellness committee on the eighteenth as well. You know, one of the things that we really try and talk about and promote too. Um, you know, is looking at the fact that. Helping kids understand that something like that occasionally is not unhealthy. Eating cake every day is unhealthy. Even eating a cake or a cookie every once in a while, isn't necessarily unhealthy.
Um, and then last question, um, when you mentioned no students ever denied. A meal, um, whether or not they can pay for it, are they being given the same meal as everyone else, or are you giving them a? I've heard of like a cheese sandwich being given or a peanut butter and jelly or something instead of. The, the offering to everybody else.
I'm gonna defer to Heather on that one.
So, uh, if a student doesn't have adequate funds, they are given a meal. That is their first choice, the state actually came out and said you cannot quote meal shame, which is what you were referring to. Uh, so we do not do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Beth Lynn?
Yeah, so, um, just kudos for what you've been doing during the pandemic. I think we all got to start there. I, I um, think it will be helpful to be able to have those for parents to recognize those restrictions that are, would be available for them. I don't know what that means on the other end for you, but making sure that that system is able to be enforced, it's because I imagine that. Just for you to be aware, I imagine that more parents, once they know about being able to restrict, would want to do some of that. Um, so ensuring that you have on your, on, on the, the administrative uh, backend, the ability to actually. Enforce that. Um, and then allergies was one of my questions and, and. I know that, I'm sure you have a way, I don't know if that's through restrictions as well, that you do that through the, the system that you have for that.
Yeah, there's a couple of different um, ways that we handle that, so. Um, allergens are identified on the menus during, during regular service when we're using. Uh, the online menus, they're identified on those online menus, um, they're also programmed into. Um, the, what's called the point of sale system where we bring those meals up. They can come up as a pop-up to let the cashier know kind of that last line of defense, that the student has an allergy, make sure everything's okay. Um, you know, from there, it breaks down to different severities, so the program itself is nut-free, so that's not a concern. Um, our entire product line is sourced to be nut-free, so there's no concerns with that. Um, and um. Defer the gluten option, Heather, I'm not sure if we're offering gluten-free bread on a regular basis. But, you know, then when you have especially the more severe allergies. We typically have one of our dieticians um, work directly with the school. Um, often work with the families to uh, make a special plan for anybody with severe allergies. Um, you guys happen to be very fortunate, Heather is a dietitian, so you have that service right onsite, whereas a lot of our districts. Um, utilize one of our regional dieticians. So Heather, are we doing anything with gluten-free and do you have any severe allergies you're managing right now?
Uh, so we do have gluten-free bread specifically for the deli, which we do have a good population at Fowler that utilizes that. Um, and I also want to say I do reach out to the nurses and usually I'll get contacted from them if they have a menu question. Um, so that we can just run through the menu together. Um, currently there, it's a little bit more unique, um, so. I would say the only diet modification that I'm dealing with is just vegetarian meals. And that's pretty much currently our, our norm.
Yep, and I, let me just say too, with the vegetarian meals. Um, again, we have the challenges with the USDA regulations. Um, because one of those regulations, as you saw, was meat meat alternate. Um, you know, so typically. Um, in school food service programs, when we're menuing vegetarian meals, pretty much that. Um, non-meat protein that we're going for, most of the time is cheese, because that's the most well-received. Um, yogurt is another big one. Um, beans as the protein, we do try and do some stuff with, it tends to not be as popular. Um, you know, we will get into some products like veggie burgers and that kind of stuff, if there's a demand, we've tried that. In Maynard, I don't know, I know.
Not very well.
Yeah, um, and then um, tofu actually only became creditable under the uh, USDA program. Just within the past couple of years. Um, you know, so we've tried some stuff with that, um. One of the things I remember we did before, um. The pandemic hit was the Bootable, that, that premiered just fall before the pandemic, I'm not sure. How'd that, how'd that one go over there?
So-so.
So we have, we've had some of those type items as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Natasha, and Natasha is muted, Colleen.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much, I, again, I, my, my husband's a chef, so I know uh, food service. Um, can, can, can really be a beast sometimes and all the elements and. And things don't come in when you expecting them to come in and how do you have to sub away, so I appreciate all that you're doing to support. Um, the Maynard community, um, and for working families as well, I know it's been a great help, um. I, I, I'm hearing some of the other feedback, I, I know from my personal experience. I, it feels like there's an education moment that I think parents who go from uh, Green Meadow to Fowler. Are not really fully understanding that um, the freedom that kids will have once they start at Fowler. To that, and I think a lot of kids, it becomes an overload potentially, like, like Braveheart, like freedom, you know, so they. Gravitate to the ice creams or all of these things, and I think parents learn um, the hard way. Because then you see your school bucks um, account going down and you're kind of wondering because things are so. Um, I guess more moderated or regulated at the Green Meadow, and so you're, I think it's an education piece that parents don't always understand. That different experience of how much kids, once they go to fourth grade, so I would. I would like to maybe think about or suggest that there's some, some, in that transition year. There is some, you know, discussion on how you can better prepare families um, from the third to fourth grade. Um, the, the opting out, but also understand what their kids will, how the difference in, in the um, the meal offerings. Will be from, from third grade to fourth grade, I think that will help families prepare and maybe have a discussion with their kids. A little bit at home, um, so you see a whole bunch of snacks or the drinks, the Izzy drinks, I know those were really, you know, new and popular, but they have. A lot more offerings, um, so that, that was just something that I would hope to be, you know, talked about a little bit more, that transition um, year. Between the two buildings, um. I wasn't sure if there was a consideration to survey families on the meal offerings that have been going on right now to see, you know, what might be. Working well or what not, might not, because you're not seeing visibility into waste and, you know, all of those pieces. And um, I'm curious, as we get back to school, um, you know, how that might be explored a little bit more. For onsite or for families, like what is it that they feel like they're throwing away? Um, you know, for whatever reason, I hate to, I hate the idea of food waste. Um, but I, you know, they don't know ahead of time what it is, and so it's kind of like, you know, surprise, and it's a great opportunity, but. Is there a way we can think about what things like the shepherd's pie, is that something that maybe is not a, you know, a favorite? All, and I'd hate to see the resources put into something that is not really being utilized as much.
Great, thank you, um, that's um, some great feedback, thank you very much in terms of um. The uh, whole thing with uh, the transition from Green Meadow to Fowler, um, that's really great and. I had mentioned we do that welcome letter that's, you know, specific for, you know, done for the, to be done for the packets, that kind of stuff. That's from a template that's used for all the schools, all of that kind of stuff. I think, you know, John and Heather can really work on creating a specific letter specifically for those parents. Of the kids that are moving from third to fourth. Um, really to explain that. The difference in the program and some of the new things, the kids will be experiencing that kind of stuff, I think that's a great idea. To do that targeted lev- letter specifically for that age group, so they understand the change between the two buildings. Um, then one of the things that they can work with the administration on, um, we've got a lot of schools that do it especially. Yeah, I mean, in the transition from a uh, elementary to a middle school. Um, is like a move-up day, I'm not sure if they do a move-up day now. Um, but a lot of schools will have us, you know. Do a special lunch with the kids where it's a little slower, it's just that grade. So we can introduce the kids to the new program and explain how it works, um, and that kind of stuff. You know, so that's definitely something Heather and John can talk to administration about and see if we can incorporate that into. Um, that transition as well.
And was the, um, I, just to piggyback off Jessica's question about the sugar. Um, if I understood you, so it's not built in, because I, I know we have like a lot of Pop-Tarts in the morning, right? And I'm trying to understand, are you, is that being uh, part of to increase the caloric intake, or how does that really factor in? You know, for those high sugar content items in the overall, I guess, meal um, planning a little bit. I know they're like whole grain, but I know that, you know, have, sugar heavy.
Yeah, and so, um, this is, we talked a lot, or I talked a lot about the lunch patterns. We didn't talk about the breakfast patterns. And the breakfast patterns are interesting. Um, and they're in a little bit of flux right now, I'm gonna go with what has been in place for several years. Um, and I believe through a court order is now back in place, but waived for this year. Uh, but anyways, the breakfast patterns, um, it's four components. Um, a milk. Up to a cup of fruit. That's K through twelve, so a first grader or twelfth grader could take, you know, two apples or an apple and a juice with their breakfast. Um, and then two servings of grains. And once. There's no protein component, there's no meat component at breakfast. But we can substitute the second serving of grains for a beet. So a great example is the fruit, breakfast fruit and yogurt parfait that we do, it's a nice cup of, you know, four ounces of low-fat yogurt, a nice layer of fruit. Technically, the entree for that is a little cup of granola that we give with. Because we can't serve that yogurt without giving the granola first. Um, you know, with that two-grain requirement, most two-grain items are gonna be. Muffins, cinnamon buns, um, you know, you can do fresh toast, that kind of stuff. But, you know, that is one place where the regulations really didn't do what they wanted to do and. You know, I'm looking at Heather, I've had plenty of conversations with dieticians about the fact that there's no protein in the school breakfast and. Nobody quite understands where that comes from. So that stuff in the morning, and Heather, correct me if I'm, are you not doing Pop-Tarts as an entree, right?
Sometimes we do put them into the takeout bags.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the takeouts, yeah. But, um, in the normal onsite program, we wouldn't typically, go ahead Heather, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just want to mention, the sugar has come up a few times, you are capturing that caloric value. As your meal total, so while you're not looking at grams for sugar as just sugar. It is being captured as the total calories in the meal, if that helps, I know that's kind of come up a little bit. Uh, excuse me, and also note that the ounces of grain that they're crediting. Where two ounces sounds so small, which it very much is, that is at the high school level, so. As you work your way down, they also will go down in portion size as well, which is not necessarily what we would all like to see.
Um, thank you, and my only last thing to mention was, I know before COVID, we had done a. A great job trying to get away from the styrofoam trays, um, and I know packaging-wise, now we're, you know, utilizing the, the containers. So just thinking about that part a little bit more about our packaging and um. It, you know, opportunities that we can steer away from styrofoam, I'd really like to see more discussions on that if possible.
Yeah, and I really would as well, um, unfortunately, your kitchens are not set up. For reusable trays, this is something, um, you know, Fresh Picks. For, Fresh Picks is a twenty-seven-year-old company, we just started moving into Massachusetts a few years ago. Uh, and when I first started touring Massachusetts schools, I was amazed, throughout the state. Most of the school cafeterias are not set up for students to be able to return reusable trays.
I think we had gotten like compostable ones or something after a while, I, I want to say before COVID, we had kind of steered away from the foam and gotten a. Compostable possibly.
Yeah, 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 and that's, that's too, we like to see um, reusable, and actually Fowler. At one point in its life, was set up for reusable trays, the um, area right behind our um, deli. Used to be a dishette, physically it's set up for it, it would take probably twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar investment now to. Um, convert that back. convert that back, which we'd love to see, but we understand it's a big expense. But yeah, we can definitely get back to the compostable once this is all over. And, you know, if you guys ever want to think about working dishwashers into that CIP and getting that set up, we'd love to help you spearhead that effort. I've done it in a couple of mass schools where it wasn't quite the investment, but yeah, coming from northern New England, seeing the way it's all disposable in Massachusetts has appalled me since we've started working down there three or four years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Just going back to what Mary said about running out of, out of options towards the end of the service. I was wondering what it seemed to me was like the, the earlier lunch services, whichever grades were in those, they had their, their choice of whatever they wanted. And by the time, like for instance, last year, fifth grade was the last grade through and a lot of the options were gone at that point. Is there a way where you can reserve a set number of servings of each thing for each grade in each service? So that everyone has an equal opportunity or the grades at least have equal opportunities to, you know, so like if you're serving 125 hamburgers, you save, you know, 25 for each of the grades so that not all 125 are eaten within the first service. Is that a way? Is that an option?
It's an option, but it's not the best option. We don't like to, you know, say, okay, we usually serve 125 cheeseburgers, so we're going to do 25 per lunch. And if kid number 26 at the first lunch wants a cheeseburger, we're going to say no, because we're out. Then you're running out at every meal period. And, you know, we'll look at this a little bit more, especially when we're back to regular service. Really, the way we deal with that is by batch cooking. So, you know, you plan for 125 cheeseburgers, you start making them in batches in between lunches. And, you know, if you're starting to see, hey, I'm going through my 125 cheeseburgers, I'm not going to make it to fifth lunch. You make an extra batch. That's really the way to compensate for it. Kathleen, your lead cook over at Fowler is excellent. She is one of my favorite employees out of the 800 that we have. Yep. You know, and, you know, I have confidence in her that, you know, if, if we were having those problems, we can work with her on that batch cooking, make sure it's straightened out. You know, and it will, we can never get it to not happen 100% of the time, but it should be very infrequently more than anything else.
Okay. And my second comment, and this probably isn't anything that you have an answer to, but maybe you could help direct us. When I used to sub down at Green Meadow and I witnessed a lot of food getting thrown out during lunches. It was painful to see, you know, and, and the whole directive and, and it's, you know, a national directive that each kid has to take a fruit. They have to take a vegetable. And usually those go directly into the trash like, or, or or they're plagued with, or, you know, it, it it becomes a source of amusement rather than nourishment. And I I had asked about, you know, well, if the kid's not going to eat the apple, I know they have to take it, but do they have to put it in the trash? Or can they set it aside somewhere where those could be used for something else? And I was told that legally, no, they have, if they don't eat it, it has to go in the trash. And if that's the case, what can we do as a school committee to advocate for the national school lunch program to look and maybe revise that requirement? Because I understand that kids really, they should be taking vegetables and they should. But if they're not eating it and it's just going in the trash, I mean, it, it just, it was unbelievable to me, the amount of food that got thrown out and it killed me.
Yeah. And it's actually why we switched to offer versus serve. Back when I started with the company 15 years ago, before these particular regulations, we used to do what was called serve, don't serve only at the elementary school. Because at that time, it wasn't required to take a fruit or vegetable. And, you know, a kid could get, could decide to get a cheeseburger and a milk and it was a meal. And it's like, that's not really a meal. And, you know, the fruit and vegetables, it was less fruits and vegetables on the tray back then. So we did serve them. When they upped the portions, made it a requirement, that's what we went to offer versus serve even at the elementary. You know, so maybe they're not taking as much and maybe hopefully eating the little bit that they take. So in terms of what happens to it when they get it. So, you know, really Vermont is the best about this concept, the concept of a sharing table. Vermont actually lets us manage the sharing tables and we've got programs where we've got like coolers set up outside that the kids can put their unwanted fruits and vegetables into and, you know, they can take them home, all of that kind of stuff. Vermont lets the food service company or the food service program manage that process. New Hampshire doesn't, as a whole, Massachusetts, for the most part, doesn't as a whole, you guys have more localized health departments. And I know blanking on her name, but the health inspector there, Beth, right? Yeah, I'm not sure where she falls down on it, but you know, in general, food code states that once we serve that food, we can have nothing to do with it. It's, we can't take it back. We can't handle it. It's gone. Not sure if you could implement a shared table that we're not involved in. That could possibly be a solution, but in terms of petitioning the USDA, much larger groups in your school committee have tried and it hasn't really happened. And like I said, I mean, their motivation for doing it was to increase the consumption of fruits and vegetables. And it has had a measurable effect. It's also increased the amount of fruits and vegetables that get thrown out. And really what we do to try and, you know, come combat that is like we talked about, offer a variety of fruits and vegetables. So hopefully the kids will take, choose something that they'll actually eat.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Brian or Jeff, did you have any questions? Nope. Good. Wayne, you? I figured you knew it all, Wayne, since you're the one who's, who's dealing with this stuff. Colleen, can you unmute Wayne, please?
Yes. No, I just wanted to add a, a comment. We, one of the reasons we invited them to come and to, to speak to everyone was some feedback that we had received from some of the staff about things that were happening and nutritional values. And we wanted to be able to answer some of those questions and to provide information so that everyone was educated. And everyone could understand how the program ran. But I'd also like to talk about, you know, meal counts and, and at the schools of how many meals we serve, whether it's be in the schools or the pickup points. And one of the things that governs what we do is obviously reimbursement. So if we get a meal count, say of 100 meals, say to go toward drop off point and we only distribute 75, we don't get reimbursed for 100. And so Heather is constantly watching how many meals come back and that to adjust numbers to try to minimize that waste because in my example, it costs us money to prepare those 100 meals. And we only get reimbursed, say for the 75. The other thing I will have to say that I will give Fresh Picks credits. I think I've shared with some of the school committee that I've talked to my colleagues and during the the COVID era, school lunch programs are running significantly in the red. We're not where we would like to be, but we're, we're a lot better off than other districts that I've heard that from, from my colleagues in terms of the school lunch program. So in that sense, we are doing better. And I think a good bit of it is one, doing, having the drop off points to get food out to families and our attempts to publicize it. And I think also monitoring the, the numbers and trying to keep that pretty tight, which as you can imagine, it's tough to do. You know, if, if you have, say, 200 people sign up and, you know, over a week's time, if those numbers fluctuate between 150, 160, whatever. You know, it is then on the food service people to try to adjust those numbers to keep those that wasted meals to a minimum. And I, I think so far that they've been doing a pretty good job of that.
Thank you, Wayne. That, that is a clarification that I had not heard before and that makes a lot of sense and, and I really, I appreciate that. So thank you very much. All right. Well, thank you, Chris and Heather and John for being here and for providing all this information and answering our questions and I really, the whole school committee really, really appreciates your time and, and everything that you've been doing for us and just how you've worked with us during COVID to, to help provide our students with meals. It's really, really appreciated and, and means a lot. And thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much.
And you're welcome to stay if you want. We're going to do policy or something next. So.
I think I might want to skip that. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. Thank you. All right. So I want to be mindful of the time and I think what, what I would like to do is maybe just do IKF tonight. We started it kind of last time. I think we could probably approve it tonight unless there's some major issues with it. And then we can table JLC and JRA for the 18th. Just because we have, you know, an executive session after this and nobody wants to be here all night. Is that okay with the rest of the school committee?
No objection.
No objection. Okay.
JRA is pretty straightforward also, but we can table.
That's true. JRA is based, yeah, JRA is not. So maybe we do IKF and JRA and then we table JLC. Okay. So IKF. Are there any questions? Or comments?
Can you just, I know there's some highlighted parts in here. Are you able to just expand on? Was there a modification there?
Yep. The highlighted parts. So for instance, math used to be three years of math. And it was changed to four years of math, one of which may be computer science course. Approved by the principal. And waivers are available for students who qualify. Those, those words weren't in there before. Same with world language. Pass at least two years of foreign language. The world language requirement, I don't believe was in there at all before. So we added the world language requirement. Two years of foreign language and it has to be the same language both years. And waivers are available for students who qualify. And then the civics was added, but I don't think that wording was changed. I think correct me, Mary, civics, is civics new in this or?
Well, it's, it's, we didn't, yeah, because the civics program is new. So, yeah, so it is.
But we didn't change any wording or anything. Yeah. Okay. And I think that was it.
Well, the bottom of the second page, academic deficiencies.
Yeah, I don't, see, I don't have a highlighted copy, so I.
So number two, at the bottom of the second page, academic deficiencies, we just said students who because of academic deficiencies cannot graduate or who are in jeopardy of not graduating, we added that. So that there's plenty of notice that basically the student is going to be given plenty of notice early in their senior year that they may not graduate. So that they can hopefully correct that.
Actually, the summer preceding their scheduled graduation year, just so they can, yeah.
I have one more question. So I went back to the, the presentation we got early February about the, from the staff at high school, which was fantastic. And I noticed that they had one of the slides from Mass Corps, they had fine art and it had one year. But I didn't see that here, art as.
Did you freeze?
Oh, did I freeze?
Oh, okay.
So I didn't see art and I didn't know with the difference, why would, is it, is it not something we would want to have here? Or why would Mass Corps, I guess if it's listed under Mass Corps, is that not equal what this is? I don't know if that's a question for Brian maybe or?
Yeah. Well, Chuck Karaginos is the one who did most of this for us. But Brian, do you have any insight into that?
So Mass Corps is a separate document, if you will, that the state says this is what they would like to see you hit. And so most schools align themselves with the Mass Corps because you want to be able to say this is what we hit. In some areas, we're above them. So like they, you know, we say for math, for English, for science, et cetera. In terms of the fine arts, I could go back and ask, I don't have the historical knowledge to know if it's always been there or if it's never been there, quite frankly.
It was just one of the things that I noticed wasn't aligned. Like all the other stuff seemed updated, like the math, like the number of years and that one just, I didn't see it on this document and I didn't know if that was intentional or, or not.
I can't answer off the top of my head. I can go back to the high school and ask them.
Yep. I, I would recommend that we pass this, approve it. And then we can, we can revisit it with the fine art requirement. But I would like to have this one on the books just because, you know, it is graduation requirements and, and.
Because the kids are in the process right now of figuring out their classes. So it is timely. Yeah.
So if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept IKF graduation requirements.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll discussion?
Just if, if then our next meeting, if Brian would just be able to give us an update about the fine arts.
I can update.
Awesome.
Okay. Mary Branley. Bethland Houlihan. Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Okay. Lydia Clancy. Yes. Approved. Great. And now JRA. Which is just a a more complete and and updated policy regarding student records. We didn't change any of the wording. It's straight from Mass. So Jessica, any questions?
No, I didn't have questions on that one.
All right. Bethland?
No questions.
Natasha?
Nope. No questions.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve JRA's student records replaces mayor's school committee policy number 615.
Second?
Second.
All right. Everybody seconded that. Roll call, vote. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Excellent. All right. And then if anyone has questions about JLC, you can forward them to me. And then we will, we will address that at, on the, the 318 meeting. Along with hopefully EBC supplemental. And the other two that we tabled that needed. Um, and the other two that we tabled that needed to be, um, addressed, JIC and JK. Okay. So now we are going to go to, um, subcommittee reports and members' comments. Tonight we start with Mary Branley.
Um, not really anything to report. Um, I was pleased a lot with last night's, um, attendance of the community Zoom meeting that, um, Brian and, and Jennifer, um, put together to update, everybody on, on the next steps for the reentry. So it was really well done. Great questions. A lot of really good questions. So, um, and I also, um, the basketball team, what they, the boys and the girls, they put the banners up at Alumni Field for the seniors, which was very, very cool. That's, that's kind of a new tradition that I'm really liking. Um, so, but that's basically it.
All right. Uh, Jessica.
Um, no subcommittee updates, which is my fault because I ended up with the last minute work.
Don't worry.
And we had to cancel it. So I will take full ownership for that. And no, uh, oh, one member comment, which is more of a question. I've, it's tied, the, um, jogged my memory with Fresh Picks being here. They are up for renewal, correct? This year? And is that something the school committee votes on or how does that work is something that doesn't need to be answered right now, but, um, I know in the past, because I was at the school committee meeting when we approved them the first go around. So I'm just curious if that's how it works again.
Um, yes.
Wayne may be able to speak to this. I know he, he mentioned to us, uh, when we were budget subcommittee meetings. I don't know, Lydia.
Yeah. Wayne.
So, um, Desi has allowed a waiver that if you, your contract was up because of the pandemic, um, you could, uh, extend people's contracts and not have to go out for, um, bids, uh, to renew the contracts. You could extend it for one year. Um, and I, you know, recommended to Brian that that with all of what's going on, that that's what we do. And, um, we, um, we, 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 we will be forced then to go out to bid, um, on a new food service provider next year.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica, is that all you have?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Bethland.
All right. So we had a communications subcommittee meeting and, um, we did a couple of things. We kind of took, we had been, I've had a regular, um, agenda and we decided to kind of, we kind of stepped back and looked through each of the things to determine kind of where, what we wanted to do, what we're going to be doing next and how to work things out in terms of, there's a communication uh, plan that is kind of set out in the, for the district, but there's also communication action steps and communication goals that, um, and the action steps tied to the communication goals that Brian has in relation to the district. So we decided, we took a look and decided to try to tweak the plan a little bit so that it, um, the way the plan is now, it's not as easy to read in the tables. So the, um, Brian was going to work on that. And then also we're going to review with that, the companion action steps and progress on those, uh, towards those goals. So we can have a, keep having a sense of, of how, of projects towards those benchmarks that have been set. And we've been doing, we've been doing that, but we wanted to try to marry those two documents together and have that make more sense so that we can really be sure that, um, that we can be very clear about what we're, um, about how things are moving forward. And then, um, in the context of the conversation, it came up that kind of one of the next things that we could be doing is looking at the policies that have been enacted and trying to see where there are communication implementation, implementation needs. So that was one of the things we're going to start trying to do, um, next time around. And then, um, consider doing something like, we talked a little bit about how we, where there are just like communications amongst the board and amongst town members and how we try to ensure that people, if they want to get on the agenda, that they know how to do that and that's clear. So trying to articulate some of that because it, um, we, there's been, we've, we've been trying to just run through an internal and external communications, communications with the community, communication among boards, communications, um, within the district and just try to keep our tabs on where there, um, just learn from what's happened and to look back from the past month and try to see like, what could we do better? So that was one of the things. Um, and then, um, besides that, we are also going to consider ways that we could help with the student handbook effort because the policy has had a lot to do this year. And there's a lot that overlaps with our communications subcommittee for that. Um, so that's for that. I don't know if you'd have anything to add, Lydia, while we're on that.
Um, no, I think just that the part of the, the figuring out how the different boards, um, communicate with one another, because it came up at the finance committee meeting. One of the members asked if there was a protocol for who they reach out to it, e- either the school committee or, um, the select board. And Ken basically said, you know, not really. Um, if it's, if you, if you're going to pepper them with a lot of questions, you should probably go through the chair. But if it's, if it's just a, a simple question, you could go directly to, um, you know, one of the members. And, um, I know that the select board and the school committee have done a really good job of agreeing on protocol, um, and, and, you know, who, who contacts who, um, and how the information is filtered down on both sides. And, um, so it, it, I realized that, that that isn't, um, we haven't made that uh, a, a standard protocol with all the other committees in, in town. And so what we would like to do is create an official protocol, communication protocol for the school committee for how um, other boards can reach out to us and how we reach out to them, just so that we don't have any more miscommunications or misunderstandings about who said what to whom. And, um, you know, people who need to know stuff that's been talked about or agreed upon, um, actually do. So that's all. Um, okay. So Natasha.
Do you mind if I just say?
Oh, sorry.
And no, it's okay. I, I know that we're, time is tricky, but, um, I did want to just mention two more things for, one was that, um, it's come up randomly, but consistently with, from different people around, considering the sports fee structure. And I mentioned this to Lydia and I know that there's a lot of going on, but I think we've been working on that. It shifted from what it had been. And, um, I think the, the primary thing that's of concern is the idea that you're paying $400, no matter how many sports you're involved with. And I don't, I don't, so I'm not there yet with my children. So I'm not as fully immersed in that to understand it as much. I just think that's the basic premise. So, um, I don't know what it might look like if there's, if we were going to like, start looking that for next year, I'd imagine now would be the time to start doing that. Um, so I thought I'd throw it out there because I think that it's been enough. It's a, it's been a work in progress. And I think that it, it could be something to, to kind of look at again, um, as we've shifted away from, I think we had no fees for a while and then we decided that we needed to have fees or else we'd have to. So, in any case, I wanted to mention that. And that, um, there was a, um, Fowler assessment that was happening at today that with, um, this week and next week with students online. And I just, I think it's wonderful to see that, like, we're find, trying to find ways to be like, how are, where are the kids at so that we can meet their needs? So I just appreciate that. Um, and, um, continuing to, I'm sure that you're talking about that all the time. So I wanted to mention that. And the last thing was, um, I'm going to send you some documents. There are two things that I wanted to send you around. New York Times is doing a really good job at the, kind of the analysis of school reopening and what needs to happen and not. And they have a great piece that I thought would be very helpful for all of us to see at this moment. And then, um, that really breaks it down. And then there was a survey done on the mental health needs of families and, and children in the context of pandemic. That was a national survey, um, all 50 states. And that too, it, they created infographics out of it. And I just think it's, it's very helpful for, for framing kind of what we're up against. Um, and you heard today, um, that the, the students are, you know, they, they would like to have their mental health needs considered at the high school. And so it just, um, I think this could be a great way for us to, um, even to share out with families, just to, we need to be able to know that it's recognized, the impact that this has had on everyone. So that's it.
Thank you. Natasha.
Um, so next week we have, um, FinCom, is it FinCom meeting? Is it next?
Yep.
FinCom, um, we have a school budget subcommittee and a town budget subcommittee meeting. And this last week, we had, on the 23rd, we had a CPAC, uh, collaboration, uh, meeting. There were some really robust conversations there, uh, primarily around, um, staffing changes for, for, um, who, for parents who are assigned to kids and how that's being communicated if there's changing and, um, some of those transition pieces. And, and Brian was there and, you know, gave some thought. It was, obviously everyone is trying to make things work for everyone. So, um, Jeff really, um, was able to listen in here. And I know that there's behind the scene conversations that are ongoing. Um, one of the things that I think, um, just, and this is where I think Jeff and, and, um, and Brian probably don't have a lot of historical knowledge, but we hear like just kind of these flows of how, when we're, we're having programs with, um, that involve like impact special education, whether it's moving a classroom or whatever, just understanding and ensuring that those communications, whether it's the building principals to the team chairs or, are just really, um, built into those decision processes. So I know that's, um, ongoing discussions, but it was, it was good conversations that to be had. I mean, a lot of things are moving. And there's, you know, sometimes there's just unintended consequences that happen. So, um, and then let's see, what was the other thing? Um, oh, and, uh, the other part two was just about when kids are coming in. I know that there was this, um, push to have kids come in. And this is where I think Bethland at one of our other meetings, like the differentiating like what's learning versus onsite and, um, and some kids who are more high, high needs who were brought in, but then potentially the, the staffing who were there maybe weren't the best to be able to provide, um, support them. You know, because they, they, whatever, they were not really trained to help with their IEP or whatever it is that needed to be done. So there is, again, as we're thinking about how we're rolling this out, we just want to make sure we're thoughtful and considering, um, you know, the supports are there, that they're not creating more anxiety for the kids or parents or, you know, even the staff, the teachers, um, that, you know, unintended, um, as well. And I know these are a lot of, a lot of things that are moving around too. And I think, oh, just to wanted to clarify. So in our budget subcommittee, um, school budget subcommittee last, last week, we spoke a little bit about the capital, um, project in this, the Green Meadow, uh, the bathrooms was kind of the thing that we had changed. So what we had thought was gonna, um, you know, originally was going to have this amount, um, at the joint budget review, it ended up being just 40,000. Greg had indicated, um, and Brian was able to, I guess, speak with, uh, confirm that, uh, if 40, if we receive 40,000, that should be enough to ensure that the bathrooms would be fully operational and able to be working for students. So I just wanted to kind of re-clarify that out there, um, because that was a concern. I know a couple of people had is having bathrooms that are not working as we're trying to get people back onsite for, um, from, from the pandemic. And that is really an ongoing, we know, um, discussions about the quarterly report. I'm just, that's one of our calls and we've talked about it, but that is something that, um, you know, we're, we're discussing and hope, and, and Wayne, probably I think later on, maybe I don't know if at the next meeting, but we'll, we'll talk more about it at our next subcommittee meeting about how we will be introducing and Wayne will be kind of presenting to the school committee on what, you know, where we are in a format. And then we would be kind of giving feedback on how we think that might work to meet our needs. And in, in monitoring the budget, where we are, do we, you know, would we adding commentary as well? Cause that's a piece that seems to be sometimes, you know, a little bit absent, highlighting trends where, you know, or the area concerns. And then also posting them on our website. So the community can really get that information and see how those monitoring efforts are, are ongoing on our, on our financial website. And I'm sure I forgot something else, but that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. So we are going to, um, adjourn and or move into executive session and we will not be returning to open session. So, um, I'm going to do a roll call, vote to move into an executive session. Thank you, Wayne and Jeff for sticking with us this whole time. Thank you, Janet and Carol, um, and everyone else who, who hung out with us this long. And, okay. So roll call, right.
You need to read the, the blurb, Lydia.
Oh, yes, I do. So to discuss, we are going to have an executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, uh, reason number three. "To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares and I so declare." So, um, ba, 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 Mary Branley.
Yes.
And Jessica Clark.
Yes.
And Bethland Houlihan.
Yes.
And Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And Brian Haas.
Yes.
And Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
All right. Are we, are?